Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. The time is now 6:22 PM. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city-of-Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real-time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I now like to invite everyone who's willing and able to join me in standing for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you very much, everyone. Next up, I'll move to item number four, which is Meeting Minutes. Councilmember Chin is going to be assisting me this evening. Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two motions. The first one is for the approval of Items 4A1 and 4A2.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Chin and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that motion passes seven to zero. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
My second motion is for the acceptance of Items 4B1 through 4B8.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Chin and seconded again by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that motion also passes seven to zero. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have Mayor's Reports and Announcements. I've got a couple of things this evening. First of all, just regarding the City of Tempe Board and Commission vacancies and appointments. In partnership with the City Clerk's Office, the City Council would like to thank all of our residents and other community members who offered their dedication and expertise to Tempe's boards and commissions. There will be 55 openings on 16 boards and commissions that need to be filled by the end of the year, and we definitely need your help. The Aviation Commission, Board of Adjustment, Parks, Recreation, Golf, and Double Butte Cemetery Advisory Board, Technical Code Advisory Board of Appeals, and Veterans Commission are especially in need of applications. So please visit tempe.gov/boardsandcommissions to learn more and to apply. Tonight, the City Council will be considering appointments to the Tempe Family Justice Commission, Sustainability and Resilience Commission, and Veterans Commission as outlined in Item 7A1 on the agenda. And just in advance, I will say congratulations, because most of these things go through pretty easily, congratulations to Jill Etienne, Aaron Boyd, and Jose Moreno on their appointments. Next up, I've got a couple of proclamations here. I'm going to read. The first one here is for Falls Prevention Awareness Month, and that reads, "Whereas slips and falls are the leading cause of injury-related deaths among Arizona residents 65 and older. It is estimated that 1 in 4 adults will suffer a serious fall, and it accounts for the highest mortality rate for men over 85. And whereas falls can result in sizable personal and financial tolls that greatly affect a person's quality of life, traumatic brain injury, depression, loss of mobility, and loss of functional independence are frequent challenges impacting those that are injured. And whereas the total cost for unintentional slips and falls, excluding costs associated with physician care, EMS services, rehabilitation, or long-term disability exceeds $3 billion annually. And whereas falling is not an inevitable result of aging, prevention programs can assist with everyday strategies to improve mobility and stability and reduce risks. And whereas the City of Tempe urges all older adults, family members, and caregivers, healthcare providers, medical centers, first responders, law enforcement, and community partners to join the Arizona Falls Prevention Coalition and routinely assess older adults, including our veterans and those with disabilities, for fall risks and strategies to improve mobility and stability." Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 2022 as Falls Prevention Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona." And the second one I have is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and that one reads, "Whereas the City of Tempe, as well as Tempe Human Services Department, Tempe Police Department, and Tempe Fire Medical Rescue are proud to recognize Domestic Violence and Abuse Awareness Month. And whereas as part of this recognition, the City is raising awareness about all forms of domestic abuse related to this epidemic. And whereas abuse can take many forms, including physical, financial, emotional, verbal, narcissistic, and sexual abuse. And whereas the City of Tempe and our CARE-7 Victim Services Team offers a wide variety of trauma-informed services to ensure that victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, and other related crimes are given the support they need. And whereas CARE-7 provides culturally and linguistically appropriate services to victims, ensuring we are respectful and responsive to the needs of the diverse populations served by the City. And whereas the City of Tempe and CARE-7 are continually expanding services to meet changing community needs. And whereas the City of Tempe is establishing a family advocacy center in collaboration with Arizona State University and other community partners, which will be the gold standard for serving victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, and other crimes. And whereas the City of Tempe will connect individuals and families to needed city and community resources such as medical exams, emergency housing, counseling, and if requested, assistance navigating the criminal justice system. And whereas CARE-7 will add new alternative healing services to assist more people in need, offering yoga, music and art, as well as group support and services for the whole family. And whereas the Tempe City Council fully supports the family advocacy center and the expansion of trauma-informed services to provide accessible, safe, and healing opportunities for those in need in our community. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2022, in Tempe, Arizona." With that, that ends my announcements. I will turn next to City Manager's announcements. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have a couple of recognitions tonight, both out of our Municipal Utilities Department. First, I want to welcome Barbara Chappell. Barbara is our new Deputy Municipal Utilities Director over Water Utilities. She was the Deputy Public Works Director for the City of Goodyear until recently and has 20 years of progressively responsible experience in the municipal sector. Throughout her career, she served as a Utility Operations Manager, Water Resources and Regulatory Compliance Manager, and Water Resources Coordinator. She has a Bachelor's of Science in Civil and Environmental Engineering and a Master's Degree in Public Administration, is an Arizona Board of Technical Registration Professional Engineer in Civil Engineering, and has a Grade 4 Arizona Department of Environmental Quality certifications in Water Treatment, Water Distribution, Wastewater Collections, and Waste Water Treatment. Congratulations and welcome. Barbara right there. Secondly, I want to congratulate on behalf of the city David Tavares for his recent promotion as Deputy Municipal Utilities Director for Field Operations. David has worked for the City of Tempe for 24 years. David served as the interim Deputy Municipal Utilities Director for Field Operations prior to his permanent appointment. Prior to serving as the interim Deputy Director, David was the department's Environmental Health and Safety Supervisor, where he revamped safety training programs, putting a strong emphasis on employee health and well-being. Prior to joining Tempe, David was a technical service chemist with Laidlog Environmental Services in California. He earned a bachelor's degree in chemistry from Miami College and inorganic chemistry from the University of Texas at El Paso. He studied environmental resource management in graduate school at UTEP and at Arizona State University. Congratulations, David, on your promotion. Very well deserved. Thank you, David. That's all I have today, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. I'd better turn my microphone on. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next up is item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the City Council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Public appearances shall be limited to an aggregate total of 60 minutes. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers choosing to not appear in person or virtually may provide their written comments to council prior to the meeting for their review. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Councilmembers are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda." I've got a few cards here this evening. I'm just going to, once again, go in the order that they were received. The first card I have here is Sam Dayton. Is Sam Dayton here?
Yeah, he's right there. He's no...
Oh, yeah, sure. That's fine. I'll put you right at the end, okay? Okay, you're welcome. The next speaker is Andrew Kissinger. Is Andrew Kissinger here? Or is he possibly in the queue? No? Okay. Oh, yeah, Sam?
I'm at it.
Okay, you got it. So I'll just cross you off? Okay, you got it. Thank you. The next speaker is Kathryn Kuvales Edek. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the City Council.
My name is Kathryn Kuvales Edek, and I am a resident of Gilbert, Arizona, and I thank you for taking the time to listen to us. There's going to be a few of us up here talking tonight. Rather than addressing the council, please excuse me, I'm going to turn around and actually address the people in the audience, if that's with your permission.
Okay. Just want to make sure that your microphone's on, so people can hear you at home.
That they can hear me.
But as long as you're speaking into the microphone, it's totally fine. And they're adjustable as well, so...
All right. Do I get the other six minutes of the people who didn't?
I wish I could. I'm just not allowed to.
I'm just checking. All right, I'm pretty loud, so...
Can you...
Have to do the mic.
Otherwise, people won't be able to hear at home.
As I said, my name is Kathryn Kuvales Edek, and I am the founder of the ARIS Foundation. You'll see quite a few of these t-shirts out here tonight. Over the last six and a half years, we have been providing an event for the homeless population within the city of Tempe at J.C. Park, and we have been there every single Tuesday without missing one for six and a half years. And I'm really, really proud of our team for that. That's a huge accomplishment. We were out there on Christmas, we were out there on New Year's Eve, we were out there on New Year's Day, we've been there every single week. We've seen our numbers grow from about 50 people to 250 people every single week. And these are not only homeless individuals, these are people who, from the community, from across the street, who needed to eat. They were food insecure, and they would come over. We've had children from across the street come over to get haircuts. We provide all kinds of services, and I think most of the community doesn't necessarily understand exactly what we do out there, but that's okay. You'll have time. So I put down some statistics. Over the last three and a half years, we've served 65,000 meals. We've provided 31,000 pairs of socks, approximately 52,000 peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for people to take with them when they went. And none of those numbers mean anything, not a single number. I don't want you to remember anything. What I want you to remember is the 227 people that we've helped to get off the streets. That's the number that matters. And I get really emotional about it because they are people's children. They deserve love and affection and attention. They don't deserve to be spit on. We've had kids come to the feed and say, "Yeah, I got spit on today, and people told me to get a job, and I didn't know what to do." So just know that when you look out in an audience of homeless individuals, every single one of them started as a kindergartner, and not one of them in kindergarten said, "Yeah, I'm going to be homeless, I'm going to live under the bridge, under mail, it's going to be fantastic. I'm going to use drugs, and I'm going to be so popular with all my druggie friends." Not one. This is not the way it works. Something happened. Something happened. So it's our responsibility as a community to help them get past that something. It's our job. That's all I got. You sure I don't get the extra six? Thank you.
Just as a note, we really can't allow clapping. I apologize, but I appreciate Kathryn for coming forward. Thank you. Let me just go to Ted Gutierrez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the City Council.
My name is Ted Gutierrez. I actually live in the city of Phoenix, and not by choice. My family has actually been a resident of the city of Tempe since Escalante Neighborhood has started. I grew up playing in the streets of the city of Tempe, and I am always proud of my heritage and its connection to the city of Tempe. Unfortunately, there was a particular night that my family had to turn their back on me. You can see, my name is Ted, and I am an addict, and I was on the street for several years. My first night being homeless was actually spent in J.C. Park. Now, the next four years, come and go is actually very blurry in that sense, and the struggle that I went through to actually get off the street was very precarious by best. And there were resources available, but I'll be honest with you, I didn't know a single one of those resources. I heard of iHelp, but I also heard of other places that would take you in and people getting robbed. So I became very conscientious about my safety in that sense, and just didn't trust anybody. And that's what the basis of it all was about, was trust. I didn't have trust in the community, I didn't have trust in myself. Eventually, eventually, it came to the point that I had to trust somebody, and it was a stranger. It was somebody I didn't even know. I actually owed him 40 bucks, but he actually opened his doors to me, he actually took care of me, he got me in. And then I was surrounded by another community that actually loved on me through the hardest points of my life. Now, in that point in time, I've actually have now 10 years of clean time under my belt, and I'm very grateful for that. And part of my recovery is to give back what was freely given to me, and I have taken those opportunities, and I'm here to actually make a proclamation that I am not going to give that up in any way, shape, or form. Over the actions of everybody in the last couple of weeks, it just seems really kind of defeating in that sense, but I'm here to give a message of hope, I'm here to give a message of resolve, that I will actually continue to help those who need help. I want to thank the City Council for all their efforts that they have done, and I hope that the continuation of those efforts can go forward in making sure that we are doing the right thing for all the people. And like Kathryn, I do want to also address the community that I so much love, and I love the city of Tempe. I have done everything I can possibly and continue to do possibly to be a member of this city. So to the neighbors that lived in the same neighborhood that I grew up in, I understand your concerns, I hear your complaints, and I feel that pain too. I got grandchildren that I want to play in the same park that I had my first birthday party in.
I can give you another 30 seconds.
Thank you, and I hope to continue to do so, and I plead to everybody in this council and everybody in this room that they will actually continue to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Appreciate it. Next person I have up is Pastor Rosemary Anderson. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Reverend Rosemary Anderson.
My apologies.
I live in the beautiful city of Tempe. So, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and neighbors, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here to witness to the cycle of the rising of tide of our transient humanity, those of the homeless community. There is a commonly known definition of insanity, doing the same things over and over, thinking you'll get a different result. And if you try time after time and you fail, you need to try something different, a new way. Now, in all of life, we find seasons that follow a cycle. There is a cycle to every human life. The ocean tides follow the moon. The tides of humanity, who are without homes in our world, ebb and flow as the need arises. When police action clears a group from a certain area, you can see there is a tidal wave of humanity seeking a new place of safety to settle. My 15 years' work in Tempe and in Phoenix have taught me this. As the issue of homelessness grows across the nation, there are groups at the grassroots of the issue working to alleviate the suffering. The ARIS Foundation is a great example. We are not contributing to the numbers of the community we serve. No one is becoming homeless to take advantage of what we have to offer in the parks. We are following a biblical mandate to care for those who need care. This is a huge issue, and I realize that there is no way to minimize or simplify this problem in the parks of Tempe. There is another way, other than police action, though. I don't know what the answer is, but I know that there is an answer. I know that God would not give us an impossible task to accomplish. I think we all need to work together on this. Albert Einstein said, "Logic will get you from A to Z; imagination will get you everywhere." Let's work together to do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with our neighbors, whoever they may be, and with the greater energy many of us call God.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate it. Next up is Austin Davis. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my friends. My name is Austin Davis, and I currently live in Phoenix. I'm a recent graduate of ASU, and I have spent many, many time in Tempe over my childhood and my young adult years. Today, I'd like to address the mayor of the council and the neighbors here today. I am the founder of AZ Hugs for the Houseless, which is a homeless outreach program here in the valley. And when we began our outreach, it was really just us going out and meeting people. That's all it was. It was having conversations, it was listening to people, and providing that little bit of care, if only for 10, 15 minutes. And as we grew, as we learned more about homelessness, we learned that the way to end homelessness is with a personalized care model and by providing each person with that individualized support. In doing that, we started the Sunday Family Picnic, which we've been running at Tempe Beach Park for the last two years, and I'm very grateful that we've been able to do that for the last couple of years. In doing that, we've seen the incredible value of these mutual aid events and why it does actually help us end homelessness. Every single week, we are connecting people to detox services, to rehab, to shelter. We are driving people, you know, to see their mom. We're getting people on Greyhound buses to go back to their family. We're getting people ID vouchers and taking people to court. And today, for example, we got two different people to detox from the city of Tempe, and they're detoxing tonight, which is a very scary new experience for a lot of people. But in all of our work, the central focus is the care, it's being there in solidarity, and we have been asked to halt our events, similar to the ARIS Foundation. It is, you know, today has felt like a period of mourning for me, really, because I love these people with all my heart, and it really is a family. That's why we call it the Sunday Family Picnic. I've been going around today telling those on the streets about, you know, how we're going to have to adjust, how we don't really know what the future might hold, but we do know that we will not stop working in support of our community. That will never stop. We're going to be working every single day to provide this care in whatever fashion that means, you know? So I just want to let everyone know that we will continue, and we will keep doing it with that love, with that support, because we know that is how to end homelessness, one person at a time, and that is what our neighbors deserve. Those experiencing homelessness are our neighbors, just as each one of you are my neighbors, and they deserve to be treated just as you would treat me or I would treat you. So I just want to implore everyone to think about that, and just know that we will continue. We're not stopping, and, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have is Dustin Woodward. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, council. My name is Dustin Woodward, resident of Mesa, Arizona. This will be emotional. You know, I, like Ted had mentioned, had battled with addiction and not being able to find my place, right? And a couple of years ago, I ended up, you know, staying in a halfway house in Mesa, and a couple people that came there and brought a meeting kept talking about this place this Tuesday in the park at Tempe. And, you know, for somebody who was rather self-serving for the better part of his life to go out and help and volunteer is something that's very foreign to me. I showed up my first Tuesday probably two years ago now. Talk about feeling at home and being able to be embraced by these people, and to be able to find some purpose in life, and to be able to help, to be able to do what we're all supposed to be doing as people. You know, the ARIS Foundation is one component that has literally saved my life. No joke. I know we can all sit up here and talk about, you know, things that we need to look at and everything else, but on a personal level, I would not be here today without Kathryn and without this group, period, hands down. The impact that we're able to have, right, we're dealing with a portion of the population that is on the periphery, marginalized, overlooked, 99% of their day, 99% of their week, right? That time on Tuesday, we get to look them in the eyes, we get to have these conversations nobody wants to have or tries desperately to avoid. We get to validate their feelings, we get to hear them out, we get to share a little bit of light, a little compassion, and a little bit of love in an otherwise dark, sheltered existence out on the edges. Now that that issue has been broadened, you know, into the center of Tempe, there are going to be some issues involved, and you have people in boots on the ground in this community who are doing it for free. We don't ask for anything, we just ask for a place to do it. And if it's not going to be done by us, and it's not going to be done, you know, in these places that, you know, that we've been allowed historically to do it, like it's been mentioned, like Austin just mentioned, we will find places to do it, we will make it happen. And the benefits you're able to see, to be able to address problems at a grassroots level, you know, is invaluable. You know, these are things that we're able to provide resources and a little bit of hope. Like when that group came in and brought that meeting into my halfway house, I got to see some light, I got to see some people who made it out of the darkness. Before that, I didn't know that was a possibility. I thought my life was drugs and addiction and isolation, and I got to see some hope. And that's the biggest thing that we get to bring every Tuesday to those people out there, is a little bit of hope that there is a way out. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have is Nick Baker. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm Nick Baker. I am a resident of Scottsdale, and I just want to thank the city of Tempe. The past four and a half years of my life and serving at that park have changed my life. I'm a crier nowadays. I'm a crier, and I want to address everybody in the audience tonight as well. Four and a half years ago, I showed up to do community service hours because some crazy lady kept calling me and said she needed some help. And before that, I was lost to drugs and alcohol. I had no purpose or direction in life. And I showed up to this little park, and before that, when I was in my car on the way there, I was a person who had stood so far down the scale that my experience benefited nobody. Nobody in the blue-collar world, nobody in my family. I didn't have anything. I showed up there that night, and I was given the gift of seeing it's not what you got, but it's what you can give. And I had this woman walk in front of me and show me how to live. And we have this little time and space right now where every Tuesday night, I get to see someone who's lost show up and become... Show up and find purpose in life. I'm sorry, am I not on the microphone? Probably not. Find purpose in life. Yeah, we start this over, I can...
No, I'll give you the... Don't worry, I'll give you the other minute. No worries. You're good, keep going.
And find purpose in life. And find purpose in life. There's a quote that, that goes, "You haven't lived until you've done something for someone who can never repay you." That's what it took to bring me back from the gates of insanity that my addiction brought me to. I had lost everything in my life until I showed up at this park on a Tuesday night and was given every opportunity to just give back. Every pain that I went through, every dollar that I stole, every bad person that I hurt, everything that I did was all of a sudden, in that moment, purified. And I just became one. And I became one with people around me that were exactly like me. And we do so much more than snow cones. We do so much more than hand out socks. We do so much more than hand out snack packs. What we provide, like many people have said already tonight, is hope, faith, and courage that they can walk through this dark time in their life, knowing that for 45 minutes to an hour, every Tuesday, they will feel like they're a part of something that's so much greater than they've been a part of before. And that's what I've seen bring countless young men back from the brinks of insanity that addiction brings us to. What we have here is something that's special. Einstein says, "We will never get out of a problem with the same consciousness that brought us into it." We have to think differently. Imagination, what happens at that park is magical. We need to embrace it. Thank you so much. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Justin Gorgons. Justin Gorgons? Is there a Justin Gorgons in the virtual room by chance? Okay. The next speaker I have is Benjamin Tieso. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm Ben Tieso, and I live in Mesa, Arizona. Thank you for your time. And I'm just here to really share my experience with the Eris Foundation and coming out. I came from Boston. I came out here. I was lost. Like, I know this is going to get a little monotonous here. You're going to hear it over and over, but I myself had trouble with addiction. I've been, and I came out here in June of 2019. I met these lovely people who have become my family, pretty much, in July. And I've been a member of this family for three-plus years now. And what we do out there is really just provide a purpose and direction for guys like myself as well. There's a whole bunch of us here tonight. I've, I, over the past year, have been able to, like, step down from some of the roles that I had and hand that off to newer guys to just do simple tasks, like when you're lost out there in the world and you just have no act of service or no giving back. That's what it's really provided for people like myself. But by doing that, I know I can state myself, probably at least a dozen, it'd be a light number, people I've taken out of the park on Tuesdays and brought them to treatment myself. Once I started doing that, I stopped going to treatment, you know? I didn't need, that provided me the opportunity to share my experience with these people. And I've gotten, I've met a lot of great, great people and given them just that minute of time, you know, that nobody else was willing to give them that day. And they've become good friends of mine, you know? I can go over there on a Tuesday night and just have, sit down and have dinner with somebody and share just a few minutes of my time and lighten their day, you know? And now, I couldn't last week, guys. I just, it wasn't allowed. So whatever we can do to resolve that here together tonight, like, that's why I showed up, you know? I don't know what that'll be. I don't, you know, I don't know what the future holds, if this is a team effort or not, but I'd like it to be. I know a lot of you have been out there and seen what we do. So if it can be resolved together, that'd be great. If not, I mean, we'll still be somewhere. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have, I don't have a last name. I just have Jerry. J-E-R-I. Is there a Jerry in the audience or in the virtual room? Okay. The next speaker I have is Arnoob Taher Kabir. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Testing. Hello, my name is Arnoob T. Kabir, and I live in Mesa, AZ. Remember my name because you'll be seeing me again soon. It's been a year since my initial exposure to houselessness in the Tempe metro area with AZ Hugs for the Houseless. And when you're out on the streets, listening to dozens of people's stories, whether they're traumatic or inspiring, yet always raw and touching, you learn a lot about what it means to have hope. I can't help but sympathize with your situation, dear city council. Badgered from all sides by conflicting interests with few solutions proposed, and when you try to pursue any solution, the backlash is endless. I commend your resilience, council members, however much my praise is worth. It's an exhausting and demanding duty. But in regards to those conflicting interests, fellow community members are antagonistic towards the work we do and actively undermine our activism. I'd like to make a couple of points surrounding myths surrounding our events in houselessness. First, we provide access to housing services to our patrons. We are not actively trying to keep our community members in poverty. We're here to offer people a semblance of food security. Second, the community can't continue criminalizing the medical condition that is addiction. People don't choose to continue taking a substance that is actively hurting them. We should be pulling them up, not shutting them away. Third, AZ Hugs for the Houseless was named after how giving a moment of kindness, a simple hug, can help people move away from the edge of a street corner and a waveward cliff. I don't dedicate so much of my time to houselessness because I want to be a good person. I do it because these people deserve better. I do it because I enjoy JJ's sarcasm, because I promised Andre that he play the drums again. I do it because I think it's deplorable that Brenda still isn't housed and has to live out of her car alongside her daughter, Crystal. I do it because little Malaysia deserves more than the 10-gazillion Barbie doll she wants, and she and none of her four siblings should have ever been on the streets in the first place. We've saved lives. We're called enablers because we feed these people. Council members, your Hope program has done good. So have we. We've worked together in the past. Removing people from the Rio Salado riverbed, already displaced so many, why are our feeds now under threat? The houseless lack of voice in politics and my own voice can't carry the will of hundreds. I hope you remember that they are as much your constituents as anyone who's uncomfortable with them eating in a nearby park. I hope. Please validate my hope in you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, the speaker I have is Dustin Pauls. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Dustin Pauls. I currently reside in Gilbert, Arizona. It is good to see a lot of you guys again. I believe I met you at one of our food drives a few years ago. Great to see you. Thank you, guys, for your time. Thank you for all that you've done with us over the past several years. We do appreciate it, and we do hold gratitude for that. So, again, a little monotonous, but I am also a human being who suffered from drug addiction and homelessness for a long period of time. I am someone's son. I'm someone's brother. I'm someone's cousin, and I was once deemed a lost individual. I was once an, I soared to a community. And for the last four years, I've been with the Eris Foundation. I've been able to give back on Tuesdays, and for about three years, I've been the Narcan coordinator for our group, which is, it's heavy. So I just kind of want to share some numbers with you, similar to what Catherine did. On average, on Tuesdays, we hand out about 30 kits of Narcan, you know? And we operate 52 weeks out of the year, right? So that is 6,240 kits that I have personally seen come and go. And each one of those kits is two vials, correct? So that is 12,480 doses of Narcan, right? Why such a high number over the four years? Because there is a demand for it, and we meet that demand, and we have to. We're not saying that this is pretty, you know? We're not saying that this is pretty at all to the neighbors that are, that are tired of the eyesore and the burdens that you feel when you see this homeless population. But we are doing our best to keep them alive, just like someone kept me alive until I was able to reach out and help. My parents have their son back now. I hold a job that's turned into a career. I hold very many things near and dear to my heart, and that's because someone gave me a chance. Someone gave me a chance to be a leader in a community that needed leading. Allow us to keep doing that, please. We know it's not pretty. We can't tie a bow on this, and nor are we here to point fingers. We meet people where we are at and where they are at, and we love them where they are at, and we will never stop. Every single person that we have heard from is a fighter. They are a warrior, and they are a survivor, and we will not stop. So please help us find a solution. We know we can't just make this go away overnight. Let's just be realistic, but let us help. You've seen several stories tonight of people that were able to get off the streets with this type of service. It works. We are here. We are right here in the flesh. So please help us to do this. Let's come together. Let's find a common solution so we can keep going, because there is no rug that is big enough to sweep this under, especially with the riverbed being cleared out. It is only going to get worse. Please allow us to help, and please let us know if there is a solution that you can bring to us in which we can help, because we love them just like we love you. Jesus washed the feet of every man. He did not discriminate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That is all the cards I have this evening. Before I close public appearances, just wanted to see if there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening. If so, please get my attention.
Hello, I'd like to say hi.
Hi. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Seeing, seeing no one else, I will go ahead and close the public appearances section of the agenda, and I will move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public item, please fill out a public hearing item. Please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I do have a couple of cars here for public hearing items, items 8C2 and 8C3. But this evening, the consent agenda is listed as miscellaneous items, 7A1 through 7A13, awards of bids and contracts, item 7B1 through 7B5, and resolutions, items 7C1 through 7C11. Any item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. And of, of right now, I've got, Ms. Justice, I've got two items here from you, so I wanted to make sure I noted that. But is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to have a public hearing item removed for separate consideration? All right. Council, is there, are there any agenda items that you would like to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration this evening? All right. Hearing none, then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the, with the exception of items 8C2 and 8C3, which have been pulled for separate consideration. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. I'm going to now go to those public hearing items.
Mayor, the two items Darlene submitted for are on the non-consent agenda.
Oh, they're on the non-consent?
Yeah, so they're still coming.
All right. Appreciate that. That's very helpful. Let me get to that, then. All right. Next up is item number eight, non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items will, scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. The first item under the section is 8A1, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Tempe, Arizona, revenue bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to, not to exceed 4.5 million. The IDA will loan the proceeds of the bonds to Excel. Council, any comments of discussion? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8A2, which is to award a professional services contract to Hazen &amp; Sawyer for the Kyrene Water Reclamation Facility Reactivation Design Services Project located at 311 West Guadalupe Road. Council, any comments of discussion?
Move to approve.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for October 20th, 2022. The first item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a Code Text Amendment for ASU Athletic Facilities District Planning Area overlay consisting of changes within the code that regulates the number of hotel keys within the University and Rural Mixed Use Land Area. The applicant is Gambleton Burnham, PLC. See the applicant in front of me? Would you like to make a presentation?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, my name is Manjula Vaz, law firm of Gambleton Burnham. Brian Kearney is with me.
And Brian Kearney with Cotellus Development Corporation. We're the master developer on behalf of ASU for the Novus Innovation Corridor.
So we thought we'd make a very brief presentation. I know some of you have not seen the full Novus presentation, so I thought we'd make just a brief presentation, given what we're here today, and so the public can see kind of where we're going. Just as a very reminder, this is the boundary of Novus or Athletic Facilities District Planning Area. It's about 300 acres. It goes from approximately the stadium to the east to McClintock Drive. And then we're going to talk a little bit about that and over, I think, the next year or so, you may hear more about this, but for those of you who may not remember, the district itself is broken up into what we call sub-districts or neighborhoods. So tonight, the site is Phase 3, which is the University and Rural Mixed Use District. There's also the Rio Salado and Rural Mixed Use District and Rio Salado and Creative Office, which there's some buildings next to the APS facility over there, close to McClintock, but most of what you see now is in the University and Rural Mixed Use District, which we call Phase 3, which Brian's going to talk about. So our request is to allow 40 additional hotel keys within the University and Rural Mixed Use District to accommodate the development of a new hotel on Parcel 3A. So I'm going to let Brian talk a little bit about the land use plan, just to let everybody know, and then we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Manjula. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context to the request tonight. For some of you, as Manjula said, you've not had the benefit of having a presentation on the overall Novus master plan and Novus vision, and for the rest of you, it really has been a while, so I hope it's not too redundant for those of you who have seen this before, but we'll be, we'll be quick. So Parcel 3A is located at a very strategic position within Novus at the intersection of Sixth Street and Rural Road. It also fronts a retail district we're creating called the Novus Place Retail District, which the, the local analogies would be Kirland and Scottsdale Quarter. They're not exactly like that, but similar type of urban mixed-use development. It sits in, in what Manjula referred to as Phase 3. You see all the parcels with the three in front of them is Phase 3. We don't necessarily go in chronological order as we, as we go through the phases, but they're grouped together in terms of logical geographic proximity. So overall, Novus represents about 8.5 million square feet of new development in addition to the Marina Heights 2.1 million square feet, which is kind of the precursor to Novus. It's an urban mixed-use development that has all of the product types you would expect from, and if, I don't know if you can, you can see the legend here, the dark orange being mid and high-rise development at the major intersections and up near the lake. You've got urban residential, which is yellow, kind of clustered in the neighborhood along You've got urban residential, which is yellow, kind of clustered in the neighborhood along the Rural Road Corridor and also up on the lake. You've got a creative office product, which is a lower density, larger floor plate product that's more of the tan or peach color that's Phase Four. And you've got hotels, which are blue, which are kind of scattered throughout the rest of the master plan. And integrated, and all of that is ASU Athletic Facilities. This Novus was actually created, this Athletic Facilities District, to create a funding stream to fund ASU athletic venues. So the expansion of the Athletics Village, which has already begun with additional fields, both for Sun Devil Athletics as well as intramural activities, and as well as the new arena, the Mullet Arena, which is opening here next month, and other, Sun Devil Stadium, other activities as well. So that's the context of which 3A sits. This was a plat, actually a replat, that the council approved originally back in 2018, minor modifications, I believe in 2021. It's Lot One within the University and Rural Mixed Use District. This is what, I won't say it looks like today, but close to today, in addition to what you see on the ground there, there's a second multifamily project, I don't think I can point, right where they can see, second mixed-use, or multifamily project under construction now, as well as on the east side of Rural, which will be our last multifamily project in Phase Three, will be started here before, before the end of the year. So Phase Three is rapidly being built out. The last thing I want to show you is really the immediate context of Parcel 3A, and I apologize, this is now on its side, so north is to the, to the right and south is to the left. This is the Novus Place Retail District, the master plan for the Novus Place Retail District, and all the red that you see along the Novus Place Street is ground-level retail that will be part, in general, part of larger buildings. One exception to that actually is Parcel 3A, which actually will have, be a mixed-use block that will have an urban park to begin with, that will be completely open to the public, as well as three restaurants and a hotel. So very much mixed-use, high-energy, people-gathering place, and that's what we're here tonight to request your approval of, is the additional keys to support the hotel. The first hotel in Novus is located on Parcel 3E, which isn't, I guess it is labeled on here, the Hyatt Place Hyatt House, which you're probably familiar with. We actually, that project ended up being larger than anticipated, and so in order to accommodate the second hotel, we need just a few additional keys. We've done a traffic report, as you may have seen, that actually showed with the new plan for 3A, it generates actually less traffic than the prior one did, so hopefully that provides some context.
So just to give you what Brian was talking about, as some of you may know, there, in each land use area, and I showed you the neighborhoods, we have a certain number of, as the council approved, certain number of units of residential office, hotel, restaurant. So as you can see, this is the current land use parameters and then overall density, and our request, as you can see, is just to increase the number of hotel keys in that one line from 425 to 465, so just 40 keys in that line to allow us to kind of complete Parcel 3A. So that's the presentation. We just wanted to give some context for the new council members and happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Anyone on council have any comments or questions? I just want to say we're not voting this evening, but still, they're here, and if anyone has one, Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I like it, and it's not that, that much, that many more hotel rooms, so I'll be supporting it in the future.
Thanks.
When we can vote on it. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Woods. I would personally, both of you guys, thank you. It's been a long process, now I know me and Councilmember, at the time, Woods, now Mayor. You know, just seeing this thing come to life, it's really amazing, and we're very encouraged of your kind of work and stuff.
Thank you.
So very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Anyone else? Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. Are there any other speakers in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any further comments of discussion? All right. Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for October 20th, 2022. The last item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a water line easement located in development located north of Elliot Road and west of Harrell Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments of discussion? All right. Hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for October 20th, 2022. Next up, we're going to go to items scheduled for second hearing and final adoption. These items were initially introduced in red on September 8th, 2022, and votes on these items will be taken this evening. First item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for planned area development overlay to modify development standards and a development plan review for a new two-story, single-family development consisting of 11 dwelling units on 0.59 acres for Tempe 11, located at 408 South Roosevelt Street. The applicant is AJT Development LLC. Would the applicant like to give a presentation? I know we got one before. Would you like to give another one, Mr. Kusicki, or?
I'd like to.
You're all good?
Yes, I'd like to.
All right. We'll see if anyone has any questions, then. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments of discussion?
So moved.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. Once the screen comes up. What? Nope. Oh, there it is. Bam. And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. Congratulations, Mr. Kusicki. The next item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R2H Multifamily Residential District with an historic, historic overlay property designation and removal of a portion of the historic overlay property designation from the new rear lot within approximately 0.08 acres for the Butler Gray House property located at 1220 South Mill Avenue. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Counsel, any questions for staff on this item? All right. Ms. Justice, I've got a card for you here for item 8C2. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Darlene Justice. I live in Tempe, Arizona. Please excuse the partial mask. I've had a lot of dental work half-done, and you'll be happy that I did this. I hope. Okay, about the Butler House, I really want to thank the city of Tempe and staff for working on this so that we don't lose this historic property, and I really think by allowing this lot split, it'll help me, and the fact that we're maintaining for five years a historic designation on the front of the house in the front, that really matters. I really thank you very much for that. I also would like for you to please consider a possible bond, a bond issue in the future. We have other historic properties that are really, really at risk. Tempe Women's Club is one of them. We have Watson Flowers. We have, we have the mill, but Tempe's taking care of that. But we have other very historic properties, especially the women's club right now, that could be at risk for someone getting it, and you go, oh, it's going to be historic. Well, they can demo it in six months. If we have a bond issue where Tempe sets aside money for historic purchasing of property, that we don't just hold on, but it can be resold with deed restrictions to keep it so that it becomes, stays a historic property. I think otherwise, we're going to have this issue over and over again, and I don't think we're going to be this lucky. Plus, this property is going to come up in five years, and I think we all know how fast that time goes. So please consider it. I think that Tempe voters, if you talk about some of the very important historic properties and that, I think that they will support it. And again, it's not to buy them all and keep them, but buy them, save them, change the deed, and let's keep our historic properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Justice. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on item 8C2? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments of discussion? I just have one quick comment. I just wanted to thank very much Jeff Tamilevich and Ryan LeBeck for all of their hard work on this. You know, the reality is, this was, this was a complex issue, and trying to find a way to save this home, and you both worked overtime. I know Ryan and I had several meetings and conversations with you, but you came up with a very creative way to get this done and to do exactly what Ms. Justice talked about, find a way to preserve another piece of Tempe's history without letting that get torn down, but also find a way for the process to continue to move forward and to make sure we weren't caught up in some kind of long, drawn-out legal battle. So quite honestly, that sounds easy, but all of you know, it's, that's a lot easier said than done, and they put in a lot of work to make this happen, so I wanted to very publicly acknowledge them for everything. So thank you, Ryan and Jeff. Counsel, any other comments of discussion? All right. Hearing none, do I have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Navarro?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. It's always close here. Vote or finish. And, yep, there we go. And that passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID to MU4, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, a public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan density map amendment from medium to high density to high-density urban core, and approve a development plan review for a new six-story mixed-use development consisting of 207 dwelling units and commercial area for the DeWitt at North Miller Road, located at 907 North Miller Road. The applicant is Hugh Mantle and Affiliates. So I wanted to note for the council and everyone watching at home, a general plan amendment requires an affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the city council. Therefore, a council vote of five out of seven members is required for approval, and there's actually going to be a couple of votes on the side of, just to let the council know. Just wanted to ask really quickly, Mr. Hugh Mantle, would you like to make a presentation? I know you did one during the first hearing, but wanted to offer you any opportunity.
Happy to do so. It may make more sense to allow public comment and any questions you may have.
Okay, sounds good. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I did have one card for this, and I'll call Ms. Justice back up. Please come forward, state your name again and place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Darlene Justice. I live in North Tempe. I lived in Tempe for 57 years. I want to thank Mr. Hugh Mantle for reaching out to our community about the DeWitt project. This project is on Tempe city property. It's right across the street from the Tempe County property that was annexed, thanks to all of you and all the hard work. Thank you, Jennifer, Joel, Randy, for everybody for that. The proposed density of DeWitt at this corner, okay, there's direct access to Miller Road, to Scottsdale and to Scottsdale Road. There's immediate access from the development north to Curry Road. You turn right to Hayden Road or left to Scottsdale Road. Curry Road is a divided lane in both directions. The DeWitt is right across the street from the Banyon. I wanted to talk about this because there's concern about traffic, and this property is right next to the 202, like the Banyon property. We have more property in the county island that we hope also gets developed, so this is going to come up again. What about traffic? What about traffic? This location in North Tempe is the closest location to getting on the 202 of any property in Tempe. You don't have to go across the lake, okay? There's easy access to both east and west on the 202. There's also easy access to get down Curry over to Hayden Road, and so, and then we have the 101 very close. So if you're going to put density, let's put it where they can get on the freeway and get to where they need to go. If they're going to ASU, all they have to do is go across the bridge. So I would like to also say that this region also does not overshadow any single-family residential. The region is closest again and most advantageous development with density. I really, I know there's many times that neighbors are concerned with density and traffic. This should not be the issue for these properties, and I think the DeWitt property is the right height, the right density. I'm glad it's next to Indian Bin Wash, which I hope at some point we're going to master plan, so we can take advantage of making that a really great place also. And for, to have residential along there, I hope we'll encourage that, too. So thank you very much for your consideration, and thanks for all your help on this, on this area next to the county island, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Really appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak before the council? All right. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I just want to thank Charles and Darlene for working together, and it's the great, the great communication that you guys have had, and I will be supporting this project and more to come on the county island, so I'm excited about the, this whole area being completely changed for the better and, and welcome into our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would like to thank Mr. Hugh Mantle and Ms. Justice as well. You know, I was telling Vice Mayor Adams, I always love when Darlene comes and talks to us, because she's always just so positive, and it's always in support of something that, you know, we're probably going to pass anyway, but she just comes here to thank us for that work, and it's such a breath of fresh air, as you can imagine, sitting up here week after week, that we usually hear a lot of negatives, so thank you again for, for not only the kind words, but your involvement in the community.
Yes, Councilmember Hodge?
I wasn't on council when this started, but I will say that Darlene took me out, and we talked about all the properties, and this was one of them, so thank you so much for catching me up and getting me there so I could be sitting here today.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Any other comments from council? All right. So once again, we got two votes on this item, so the first vote is on the general plan density map amendment, so I'm going to look for a motion on the resolution authorizing a general plan density map amendment.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Keating. And that item passes unanimously, seven to zero. The second vote is on the zoning map amendment, planned area development overlay, and the development plan review. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I feel like I'm going to go here with a motion by Councilmember Keating and a second by Councilmember Hodge. And that item also passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Mantle. All right. The next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 29, Article 2 of the Tempe City Code by amending Section 29-25 relating to the use of alleys as thoroughfares. Counsel, any questions for staff on item 8C4? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Let's see, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a portion of an irrigation and utility easement lying west of River Drive and located in the southeast quarter of Section 24 Township 1, North Range 4, East Hila and Salt River Base in Meridian, Maricopa County, Arizona. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments of discussion? If not, I can have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to go with a motion by Councilmember Hodge and a second by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And that item also passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance abandoning a portion of an existing public utility easement on property located near Loxspur Lane and Palm Drive. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? I will close the public hearing, then. Counsel, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. With that, we're up to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I will call upon council members for their comments. I will call upon council members for their comments. You can see someone say, oh, because they know that they are up first based on alphabetical order here. And I'm just saying, I've been asked by the Tempe 11 folks, Eddie and Jason, to go in alphabetical order, so slides are always queued up. So I want people to know, as with the last name Woods, trust me, it hurts. It burns me, too. Okay? Hurts my feelings. All right. So with that, with that little bit of distraction I've now provided, let me turn to Vice Mayor Adams.
Thanks for the distraction, Mr. Mayor. So Fort Peeks Oktoberfest is coming up. It's going to be at the Tempe Town Lake, and it's one of our best events of the entire year. The festival runs from Friday, October 7th, until Sunday, October 9th. This is the main fundraiser for our very own Sister Cities program, of which I'm a proud lifetime member. If you haven't become a member, please think about it. The festival combines beer gardens, live music, a polka stage, great food, a carnival kids, activities, and much more. So come out and enjoy the festivities. At Tempe Beach Park transforms into a traditional beer festival during the day and a concert venue at night. I look forward to seeing you there. My second announcement is Second Sundays on Mill. Starting in October, join us the second Sunday of each month for an outdoor market, live music, and entertainment, and plenty of fun for the entire family. The outdoor market lines Mill Avenue between Third Street and University and features homemade goods and gifts from Arizona local artists, crafters, and makers. And it's completely a free event for the entire family, and you can bring your dogs. So bring your dogs and let them have some socialization out there. It starts in October and goes through March 2023, from 10:00 in the morning till 3:00 PM. If you'd like to participate as a market vendor, farm vendor, or community partner, please visit the website at downtowntempe.com/SecondSundays. And this is a great event. I love going, and so I would encourage you all to attend. Thank you so much. That ends my announcements. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Adams. It's great to see you back as well. Next up, Councilmember Chin. Nothing? All right. Thank you so much. Councilmember Garland?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. Miss all you guys.
Miss you, too.
So I think I have a slide that should be coming up. I just want to, if we're waiting for the slide, I'll just keep going. I just want to say thank you so much to everyone who came out to the Backstage Pass event that we had at the Tempe History Museum. It was a packed room, and it was so much fun. I just want to specifically call out Brenda Abney, Josh Roffler, Jared Smith, Jen Sweeney, and Brianna King. They really did make Tempe history come alive by giving our tours and really being kind and adjusting to the amount of people that we had, and it was really spectacular. And I just wanted to just make sure I give them a shout out and say thank you to them very much. And although the name is not on this card on this slide, I also want to say thank you to my council aide, Paul Smith Leonard, for his help. He was absolutely amazing getting all of this organized, so I just want to say thank you to him. And also, as Vice Mayor Adams was just talking about the Oktoberfest, it's a blast. I hope everybody does go. I'm going to be serving beer. I can't remember what time, but I think it's on Saturday. And, you know, the Sister Cities, when they raise those funds, it goes to fund our students to go to our Tempe Sister Cities, and it's really helpful to be able to put your child in that Tempe Sister Cities program and know that some of the funding to get them out of the country, and then hosting all the other countries that come to the city, it really helps them to be able to participate. So I just want to say thank you, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland. Really appreciate it. Let me next go to Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first start off by saying that I had my first breakfast with Brindetta last Saturday. It was a phenomenal event. I want to thank Carla and Nikki for coming and joining with Sapan to help out and being there, and we had over 50 guests. So it was a very nice, well-attended breakfast. Also, just to let you know that I have a next one coming up, October 15th, and this one will be education-based, so hope to see everybody there. Thank you. And my next one is on College Connect. They have an annual virtual event on October 26th from 6:00 to 7:30. As everyone, please come out if you have kids. It's a great student event, and even if you have a neighbor who wants, you know, you want to help out with them getting into college, it's always good to be there. So that's the next one on College Connect. And also, I met a great organization. It's the Greenhouse Gives. It's a nonprofit, and they like to, they bring out from all backgrounds, they say, with all abilities together. So they have their game night from, let me see, September 23rd from 5:30 to 8:30. So if you would like to know more about the Greenhouse Gives, you could come out, and they'll have some information out there and have some fun with some games in the community. And that's all I think. Oh, and also, on our Saturday event, we, on my day of my breakfast, we had a person who was hit by a car crossing the street. So just a reminder that when you cross, when you don't take the time, if it's only a few minutes to walk to the crosswalk and cross in there, because it is a tragic event when we lose people to just crossing in the road. So I just want to say that and give a thought out to the family that was lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge.
Well, this one is with Councilmember Keating, too.
Well, he was up next anyway, so.
So you want to take this one, Councilmember Keating? So this is us together.
Yes, me and Councilmember Hodge will have our Workforce Readiness and Economic Vitality Committee meeting Monday, 3:00 PM. It's always the last Monday of the month at 3:00 PM. We'll be talking about Tempe Pre, out-of-state medical travel, Tempe Works, and what else we got? Anything else on there? Career Connect Tempe?
Career Tech and also Tempe Salute.
Tempe Salute as well. So we'll be hearing from our Veteran Services Coordinator, too, I believe. So they were always a lot of fun with me and Councilmember Nando Savage, so we'll try to make it, try to make it as fun as we possibly can.
It's going to be better.
Okay. I'm not going to tell you, you said that, so I doubt she's watching this meeting. Thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Keating. Councilmember DeVore?
I was going to change my coffee talk to having gin with Joel. Does that sound good?
How about gin and juice with Joel?
Gin and juice with Joel?
I'm all in.
I have nothing there right now.
Oh, thank you, Councilman DeVore. All right. One thing I was going to say really quickly, too, is just thanking some of the members of our staff. We had, a lot of us saw an issue kind of pop up in Council Communicator and on social media over the last couple of weeks regarding a lot of parking from a sort of a business entity in their neighborhood, and, you know, a lot of concerns, clearly, people understanding that they're public streets, but at the same times, people obviously enjoying the quiet and the peace of a neighborhood, and obviously, if people begin to really heavily park on those streets, it creates some real challenges for the residents who live there and want to make sure that they can park there, and their visitors and guests can also park in the neighborhood. And spent a lot of time over the last week or so with a lot of our staff members and wanted to definitely give a really big shout out to Sonia and Shelley and Jeff Tamilevich Parish and Rosa and Assistant Chief Andre Anderson as well. A lot of folks really came together, frankly, to work on this. We actually do have a solution now. The neighborhood has reached 50% plus one participation in terms of actually saying that they want to go to a residential permit parking structure. So as of tomorrow, city staff are going to be going out. All of these signs for temporary permit parking will be up by noon tomorrow, and that will restore parking, frankly, for the residents in that neighborhood, and will allow them to not have that giant number of cars on their street. So for anyone watching this meeting in the Broadmore neighborhood, make sure to go down to the Tempe Transit Center over at 200 East Fifth Street on the ground floor to pick up your temporary residential permit parking pass. You'll get one for yourself as well as for a visitor. And just wanted to, once again, just thank staff for this. I know it was a giant inconvenience to a lot of the residents living in that area, but thanks to staff doing some very quick, very innovative thinking on this. We've been able to restore a lot of peace and quiet to that neighborhood in very short order, so I wanted to thank everyone for all your hard work and for working together so closely. So thank you. With that said, I don't have anything else other than that. Just want to move on to item number 10, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? And if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. Seeing none, I will move to, oh, sir? Yes. Please come on down. So I'll have to read this statement really quickly. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion in legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the City Council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the City Council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending the meeting. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on commenting or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. And at the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. With all of that said, please come forward to state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Sam Dayton. I live in Tempe. I was just curious about a previous matter that got passed. First city council meeting, there was one very swalf with the seven-point section. The matter, it says authorize the city manager, sorry, DSG, to negotiate exclusively with Guinea-affiliated developers, Hugh Commercial Properties LLC, Yucca Rental Properties, et cetera, et cetera. Do you know what I'm referring to?
Absolutely. Absolutely. The Danell Plaza RFQ. Absolutely.
Yes. What exactly was the ultimate decision in that matter?
Since that one was on the agenda earlier, Madam City Attorney, would you be able to address that?
I'd be happy to. What the matter is, it's called an RFQ, standing for Request for Qualifications. And what the city did was initiate that request for developers to come forward to present their qualifications to develop the Danell Plaza property. Are you familiar with that location?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what it was, and there were parties that responded to the RFQ, and an award was actually made to a group that put a proposal in, and the city will begin working with those folks to try to get a development agreement for the site.
Okay. Okay. I definitely understand. As far as the purpose of it being in the agenda, did you guys cover it at all in that aspect? Did you have a, can you respond to that?
Absolutely. So the main purpose of that is just to, so there were two development groups that were selected. You talked about Eric Guena, who's recently kind of, you know, come into the community and has a lot of holdings in the Danell Plaza section. Also Rodney Hugh, who's the longtime owner and proprietor of the Yucca Tap Room, which I believe is the longest-serving live music venue in the city of Tempe. And so the purpose of it is basically just to allow the city to negotiate with both parties to see if a development agreement can be reached. So there's no specific project at this point. There's no renderings.